All right, well, for those on the call, hello. I am Commissioner Misty Servia for District Four. I want to welcome all of you to tuning into our virtual town hall on hurricane preparedness. So over the past several months, the coronavirus quarantine and restrictions on group gatherings have made it impossible for our emergency management office to make springtime visits to neighborhoods and community meetings to pass along the most important messages for hurricane season. So we decided to reach out to you in a different way this year. And I thank everyone for their patience and their interest in getting this year's update. Joining me today is Steve Lichauer, our emergency management chief. By the way, it's his birthday. And Jake Sauer is running a few minutes late to the call. He is our public safety director. And together, they have more than 50 years of combined public service in our community. Steve is going to tell you how you can find out if your home is safe enough to shelter in place, or if you're in an evacuation zone. He's going to give you suggestions on where to find safer ground. If an evacuation notice goes out, we will open some public shelters with social distancing restrictions and other safeguards. However, the coronavirus is extremely dangerous, and it is extremely contagious. And there is no perfect preventive measure we can take to completely guarantee the virus does not enter a shelter, or that it spreads to those who are there, even if they're wearing face masks and washing hands regularly. So with that, I'll turn it over to Director Sauer. I don't know if he's on the line, but we do have Chief Lichauer. And they are going to do a 20-minute presentation, and then we will take some time to answer your questions. Steve?
All right, we're ready to go. All right, as Commissioner said, I'm Steve Lichauer, Chief of Emergency Management. And what we'll be doing tonight is going over some key points. And those key points are know your home, and that means the construction of your home, what winds it withstand, know your level, and that's what level of evacuation you live into, evacuation tips, preparing your home, sandbag locations and shelter locations, and what the difference of 911 and 311 is. So throughout the presentations, there'll be several computer links. They all start with mymanity.org. And I can tell you that if you forget the rest of that, when you get into that main site, you can just type in keywords as shelters or guides and things like that, but we'll take time. So we're in hurricane season. We're a little over three weeks into hurricane season. We already have, we've already had four named storms. Earlier in the week, we only had three. And if you remember, we actually had two named storms prior to hurricane season. And you will know that I was educated here in Manatee County when I said, this year's hurricane season will be a tad busier than last. That means a little bit more. So this year, they're expecting to have 16 named storms, eight of which will turn into hurricanes, and four of them into major hurricanes. But we do not want you to look at those numbers and say, oh, yeah, eight of them's already been here and nothing to worry about. The most important thing we want you to know is it only takes one. The people in the panhandle two years ago, letter M, quite through the alphabet, learned that it only took one, and they will be recovering for a long, long, long period of time. So hurricane season is basically June 1 through November 30. If you look at this chart, it shows that the peak of hurricane season is September the 10th. Basically, the busy time of the year starts in mid-August and continues to about mid-October. But this is a chart over 100 years. If you think back about three years ago, Hurricane Irma, any guess, September the 10th? So it hit it right on the mark, but it can really come anytime. And if you've lived here a number of years, Manatee County's been very fortunate on hurricanes. We've had considerable damage, though, from what we call a good no-name storm. So always be prepared. It may not be that category four or five that's going to do major damage. Two weeks before Hurricane Irma, we had 23 inches of rain, and there were about 140 homes that suffered major damage from that flooding. So don't key in on, oh, it's a certain category of a hurricane. This is the other thing. We want you to be prepared now, more like we wanted you to be prepared 25 days ago. And that is, and we've seen some of them, we can watch these storms come across the Atlantic for seven to 10 days, and watch them come, and watch them come, and watch them come. What we have to worry about is those storms that fall, if you're on the computer, that form down here in the Caribbean and work their way up in the Gulf of Mexico, because they go from a, I call it, a Sunday afternoon rainstorm to a category four or five in three days or less. Three days or less from a rainstorm to a major hurricane, and that included Hurricane Michael. Three days, once that storm comes, is not time enough to prepare. It's barely time enough to evacuate. So that's why we want you to be prepared now. Every year, we get hurricane guides in, and this year's the same. So if you belong to a homeowners association, mobile home park, a group, a club, and you want some new guides, at the end will be my contact information, and we can arrange you to come get them. They come in boxes of 200. Otherwise, you can pick them up at Manatee County libraries and several of the city halls. Or if you like, you can go onto mymanity.org. And if you see this long link, you can drop that down. But all else fails is mymanity.org backslash manatee.org, and just put in hurricane guide, and you can get the same guide online. We also have them available in Spanish, if you wish that also. A great resource, but if you have last year's, you're in good shape. Just a few changes, cosmetically more than anything, but the important numbers, the maps are all the same. So if you have last year's and don't get a chance, you're in okay shape. We used to tell everybody, prepare for three to five days. Now we say at least a week, if not 10 days. It's very important to be prepared. And like I said, you should be prepared now. If you're not, maybe this weekend, you can go out and get prepared. What other things, if you have been preparing every year, that you've been down here or living down here, what else do you need to get? Well, guess what? You need masks, gloves, and sanitizers. Whether you go to a neighbor's house, whether you go to a shelter, or whether you evacuate out of the area, those items you still want. I will cover masks, gloves, and sanitizers being at the shelters in a few minutes, but put those in your kit now also. Your disaster kit. I jokingly say our disaster kits in Florida is no different than if you lived up north and had one for blizzards. The only thing you don't need, your snow shovel and your fur coat. But you still need food, you still need water, you still need your medication. One thing I want to tell you about medication and prescriptions, take the bottle with you, because what we saw in Hurricane Michael when I was up there, people took their medicines in their little, I call it the Monday-through-Sunday little things that you use, and left the bottles. When they came back, their home was destroyed, their doctor's office was destroyed, and so was their pharmacy. How do you get a prescription done when all of that happens? So take your prescription bottle with you. Something else, and again, reminder of gloves, sanitizers, and masks. Cash, you need to take cash with you, because electric may be out. What we recommend too is that you stock up on your beef stew, and your chili, and your pork and beans, and all that good stuff. But come the end of November, first of December, you know what a lot of condos and mobile home parks and clubs and churches do? They have food drives. So why not re-gift that can of pork and beans, or that can of beef stew, or spam? Re-gift it to somebody that really needs it. And if any year anybody really needs it, it's probably this year. So think about that. It's a good way to really enhance community giving, that you give away your canned goods at the end of hurricane season. And you can always restock up. But the important thing here is stock up now. Don't wait, because you know, for the last three months, I think I've gone in grocery store twice, but when I did, the shelves were bare. So you may be able to get one extra can of soup this week and another one next week. So that's why we want you to start now also. Something else we want to remind you about, and as you start making your kit together, look at this website, To Inform Families First. The website's listed there, very, very important. This actually started from a woman here in Manatee County, whose daughter was killed in an automobile accident, that I believe it took them, the law enforcement officers, six hours to notify her, because they didn't know who the next of kin is. What I can tell you is that your information listed is protected, and no one can get to it unless it's a strict emergency. But that's just an added, added thing, that as you're preparing, go on the website, you can Google also Families First and get the website. Really good to have a next of kin listed in the driver's license database, and it is protected under several acts. But a good resource, no matter what, whether we have a hurricane or not, you never know what may happen. All right, the other thing we need to prepare for is for children. Now, you may not have children at home, you may not have grandchildren at home, but you know what? We live in paradise. We live on the west coast of Florida. You have, we have beautiful beaches. So whether it's your children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, nieces or nephews, a lot of them come down for the summer. Well, when do we get hit by hurricanes? During the summer. So I can tell you that if my little granddaughter was down, and we lost electricity, oh my. So I would want, like many of us grew up, card games, Crayolas, board games, and things like that, and plus a few little snacks. So even though they may not live with you all the time, they may be with you when a storm comes our way. So please prepare for the little ones. The other thing we need to prepare for, you know who? That's right, our fur babies, as I call them, our fur babies. We have to tend to them, just like we do anybody else, food, water, medicine. They need their important documents also, leashes and collars. But here's something that Chief Brown of Manimal Services wants to get across. If you do evacuate, whether it's a friend, family, hotel, out of state, or shelter, you need a crate, and that crate needs to be big enough for your dog or your cat to stand up and turn around in. If they can't do either one of those, you're abusing the animal. So make sure you have an appropriate crate for your loved fur babies. But we have to prepare for them too, so don't forget them. All right, this is one of the things we're talking about, knowing your home. Know your home. And that is, this is according to Manatee County Building Codes. If your home was built after 2012, it was constructed for 150 mile-an-hour wind. If it was constructed between 2002 and '12, 130 mile-an-hour wind. And let me, 150 mile-an-hour is a high category four, 130 mile-an-hour winds is a category four, and then the 110, which is 2002 back, is a category two. And now, what I want to say is, if you have an older home, or even a 2002 home, doesn't mean that you haven't already replaced your roof, because look at 2002, that's 18 years old. You may be needing a new roof. You may have put on a new... Okay. All right, Commissioner, you can hear me now?
Yes, sir.
So sorry, for some reason, I lost the internet, got it back. So we evacuate for two reasons. One is storm surge, and that is that big wall of water coming in off the Gulf of Mexico, coming in off the Gulf of Mexico, going its way up the rivers. The other item is manufacturer homes and mobile homes. So those are the reasons we evacuate. So that's why we need you to know what zone you live in. Now, we want you to prepare your home too. So whether it's shutters, and if your home was built after 2007 or more, you were provided shutter somewhere. Maybe they're in your attic, maybe they're in your garage, but you had, have shutters. Or maybe you have bought them since. Like my home, we use old-fashioned plywood from one, either Home Depot or Lowe's, but we use plywood. The thing I want to remind you of is pick up your lawn furniture, your bicycles, your barbecue grills, because they will become projectiles. And let's say you have a neighbor who's gone away for the weekend or the summer, and they left their lawn furniture out, and a storm's coming. Pick that up, put it in your garage till the storm's over, because if you don't, you may be seeing that barbecue grill or chair right through your plate glass window, or someone else's. So please secure your home. If you have trees, think about how close to your home your tree is, and how tall that tree is, in case it snaps and comes across your tree, your home. So think about that. So prepare your home, picking up things, shutter, hurricane windows, et cetera. Something we want you to know about, EMS and fire, stop responding at winds of 45 mile-an-hour or more, sustained winds. And that's not a county-wide, so they, wind could be out on the beach at that, but not in town or out east, but sustained winds in an area in which they are. Law enforcement stops at 45 mile-an-hour or more, I'm sorry, 55 mile-an-hour or more. All right, know your level. I'm going to show you a demonstration. Know your level is at mymanity.org-information. And then we'll go into how to find out where sandbags and shelter locations are. Again, those are the links, but if you, all you do is remember mymanity.org, then in the search bar, if you put evacuation level, or sandbags, or shelters, it will take you to those locations. So know your level. You'll see a screen like this. If you enter your address, which is, here I put in 112 Manatee Avenue West, hit search, and it'll bring up a screen with multiple little screens, but the one shot is under public safety, see where we're at, evacuation C, D. The reason is that, is the way the property is located, I would err to safety, and that particular address is in evacuation level C. The other part of this website, a little bit down on it, or link, is under property information, property information. You look down here and see year built. Remember the prior slide, where I said 2012 was 150, 2002 was 130, prior was 110? Here's the year it was built. Again, you could have even a house built in the 50s, you could enhance that by hurricane windows, a new roof, et cetera, et cetera. But if you have no idea, this is a way to know when your home was built. The other site, if we go to, brings you up to this. And if you look, see the little red schoolhouses throughout? Those are 24 schools that we use as a shelter. If, when you see over here to the right, you see, if the schoolhouse is red, that shelter is closed. If it's green, as you see over to the right, that shelter is open. We do not open all 24 at one time. We open them in phases, and it depends on, is the storm coming in straight from the west? Is it coming up from the south? Is it coming from the east? And so we'll open them in different phases. And this way, you can go online. Obviously, we'll post to the media, to our website, many other places, but which of these shelters will be open? So you could live two blocks from a school, it may not even be one of these 24 schools. So double-check. So that's on shelters. Other thing is to see the little bags that I'm circling. Those are sandbag locations. If that is black, that sandbag location is closed. If you see over to the right, in the legend, if that sandbag becomes an orangish-red, that means it's open to pick up sandbags. So a couple of great resources, you don't have to call anybody, you don't have to, you know, wait in line, somewhere to ask. You can go right online and see what shelters are open, and what were sandbag locations are open. So that's great resources. Okay, if you must evacuate, and we're urging you that if you live in a well-constructed home, and are out of an evacuation area, you consider what we say shelter in place. So if you live in, and let me see if I can go back. Yes. If, if you live in, like, in this area here, see how white it is? It's not in evacuation area. You live in this area, or this area. You're high and dry from a surge, and you live in a newer home, or one that's had a new roof and hurricane windows, you don't need to evacuate. See over here, you don't need to evacuate, or over here. So we urge you, if you can, not to, but if you have to, think about going tens of miles and not hundreds of miles. If you were here during Hurricane Irma three years ago, you knew it took you two, three, and four times the length of time to get out of town. If you find a family or friend, or even a hotel down here in a safe area, you can evacuate tens of miles and not hundreds of miles and be still close to home. Or if you do, you can stay at a family and friends, like I said, outside the evacuation. So if you, if you are in evacuation area, find out where you may be able to go. And if you can't, we'll tell you about shelters. Now, if you do decide to leave, please leave as early as possible. Don't clog up the roads, because in an evacuation, number one is you can't go west. If you do, you must have a boat, because it's the Gulf of Mexico. And you're not going to go south, because usually that's the direction of the storm, and everyone from South Florida is going to be coming up I-75, from the Miami area, the Naples area, the Charlotte area. And guess what? It's just not us going north, it's all of South Florida also. So shelters. Shelters is a safe place from the storm. You will get something to eat, period. If you look at the picture here, this is a shelter from a prior year. Does that look like there's social distancing? No, and we cannot allow that. What we had to do this year is bring in standards that both the CDC, State of Florida, American Red Cross has set. Normally, in a shelter like this, each person is given 20 square feet. Through the new guidelines, we have set it up for 60 square feet. Well, mathematically, that means we only have 35% of what shelter space we normally would have had. Now, in the shelters, we will provide masks and gloves, but if you can come and bring your own, that's even better. And we will put in social distancing the best, as best as we can. But when you have a shelter full of hundreds to thousands of people, even with social distancing, there's no guarantee you may not get sick. That's why we urging you this year that a shelter is a refuge of last resort. You are safe from the storm, but, and that's what we need you to think about. In years prior, we said it was a lifeboat, not a cruise ship. Well, now it's more like a canoe. You're not going to drown, but we cannot put your NPs in. As you know, CDC talks about social distancing, crowds less than 50, et cetera, et cetera. We're going to do whatever we can. That's why we only have 35% capacity. In an Irma, which was even barely a storm, we were maxed out. And that's why we're trying to get across to you, know your home, and know your zone, and not just go to a shelter. Have it to be a refuge of last resort. The other thing is, is you've got to bring your own cot, your own mattress, your own bedding. So refuge of last resort, if you need to go, there is a safe place for you. But we try to get you to go somewhere else, if possible. Medical need shelters, that's if you're oxygen-dependent, and electric, electric-dependent, or Alzheimer and dementia, we have a special place for you in a separate school. And we ask you to sign up, not you, or your family member or friend, but we ask you to sign up now. The best way to describe it is, if you were going to be holding a party, now I hope you're not, but if you were going to hold a party for 25 people, and tonight 100 people showed up, would you have enough room, and would you have enough supplies? And that's what we worry about, because even in Irma, quadruple, four times the amount of people we expected showed up within 48 hours. And we're worried about enough food, enough space, and enough medical staff to support it. So sign up now, if you are, or a family or loved one, oxygen-dependent, electric-dependent, or Alzheimer. We also have a transportation-dependent list, that a lot of you may not drive for many, many reasons. You can sign up for transportation. And what that is, is we'll take you to the nearest shelter, and then we'll pick you up and take you home, if you have a home left. We also have a homeless transportation plan. So there's ways of being helped. But if you need transportation, please sign up now, same link, but for transportation We urge you to sign up for code RED, mymanity.org/emergency. And you will get messages directly from us, because as I put it, if you, if you are watching TV one of the Tampa stations, and they're reporting, oh, it's raining cats and dogs in Tampa, you could look out your window, and it'd be sunny day. So they give good information, but they cannot know what the entire Tampa Bay situation is. So mymanity.org/emergency, we'll send out limited, but very important, emergency notifications. A lot of you may have already seen it. We have a new function, that if you text MANATEEREADY, all one word, to 888-777, you'll receive short text messages. We've been pushing a lot out over COVID, and if a storm comes, we'll push a lot of text messages out that way. But it's another good resource to have, that we can communicate with you, and you will get immediate notification. A short text message, MANATEEREADY at 888-777. All right, CERT teams, Community Emergency Response Teams. Neighborhood-based, we have seven teams, about to have eight teams in the county. If we wouldn't have COVID, we put on two classes a year, but in short, because this presentation's only 20 minutes, it's our eyes and ears in the neighborhood that have received 24 hours of training on disaster response, first aid, things like that, that can help us, excuse me, help us know what's going on in the community. They can more trained than the individual, and they're really a liaison between first responders and the EOC and their community. If you want to know more information, you can contact me, and I'll have my contact information. But a valuable tool, like I said, right now, we have seven teams, going to eight teams in the county. We urge you to participate in CERT training and teams. And that, as we start training, again, will be put out further. We're on Facebook, Manatee County Government is, Manatee County Emergency Management is, Twitter, and of sort. The other thing we now have, about six, nine months ago, started 311. Just like 911, but 311 is for non-emergency calls. So if you needed to call the utility department, you had one number to call. If you needed to call Public Works, it was somebody else. If you needed to call and ask for sandbags, it was somebody else. Well, now, it's very easy, one number, 311, for those non-emergency numbers, be routed to operators, and they can answer your questions. If they can't, then they'll forward you to the proper area or get the information. So what's very important is, is one to call 911, and one to call 311. 911 is for emergencies, fires, crime in progress, accidents, health issues, not routine, there's a speeder in my neighborhood, or how do I get to somewhere, or where is the sandbags? That's what 311 is for. So 911's for emergency, 311 is for non-emergencies. So I'm going to leave this up for just a minute. This is my name, my email, my direct number to my office. These were purposely made to keep it short, a lot of information in a short period of time. And like I said, the, the video... And like I said, the, the video will be posted. If you didn't get a chance to write something down, you can go back to mymanatee.org backslash town hall and select which commissioner's town hall meeting you want to view. And that will be there probably within 24 hours, it will be posted. Or give us a call or email. I'm going to stop sharing my screen and go back to... Okay, so what? Let me look at something real quick.
Steve, I have a question when you're ready.
All right, yes ma'am.
Okay, so because we're in the middle of a pandemic, God forbid a hurricane or a tropical storm comes our way, and if we need to evacuate certain people, but we have positive COVID patients, what are they to do? Is there a place that they can evacuate?
Well, what we're trying to do, and again, it's trying to look at masses, that there'll be like temperature checks in the school. And again, space limited, that we're going to try to have separate rooms in the schools. But again, the footprint of a shelter is only so big. And again, if it's coming our way, Sarasota, St. Pete, Tampa is going to be experiencing the same storm. So again, if, if they're very ill, they'll be in the hospital. If they're just positive, that's why we're urging people to go somewhere else, if at all possible. Because there is no guarantee of where to put positive people. And that is one of the issues there.
Right, yeah, that makes it very challenging. May I ask one more question, and then we'll go to the audience? So last year, I remember we had a number of people shelter in Manatee County that didn't live in Manatee County. They started coming from the south, trying to evacuate maybe, and then stopped here in our community to shelter. Do you think that that may be a problem this year with the reduced capacity?
Absolutely, and, and every county's experienced the same thing. So we're not the only one that is reduced capacity. Everyone else is all. And again, that's why we're urging, knowing when, because we went back and looked, and a lot of folks that sheltered during Hurricane Irma did not have to. So that's the cause of knowing your home, knowing your zone. And, and that is, that is a concern, because people are headed our way. And that is a big concern. And there's only so many places that are constructed to be guaranteed a safe environment. And so, yes, that is a concern. And that's why we're, you know, trying to urge people to have their plan now, where to go. Because we, we don't have, we entire group even don't have enough nurses to go around and things like that. And I hate to say that we'll do our best, but we have no location just to put... And, and the problem is, if you think back, that what did they say? 80% of COVID positive is asymptomatic. So it's the ones you don't know that are an issue than the ones you do know almost, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that's a really high percentage.
Yep.
Okay.
So here's what we've been doing. I don't think we have any phone callers. We would take the phone callers first. But if you have a question on your screen at dead center below, you have raised hand. If you click raise hand, we will open up your line. So does anyone have any questions of myself or the commissioner? Anyone have any questions? All right.
I think you did a very good job, Steve.
Thank you. So I'll just say that, thank you very much for tuning in. Please pass the word. You can put the link of the video, say, on your websites of your condos or mobile home associations. And we're always there to assist. If you need God, shoot me an email, call us, and we'll try to help you. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner, to end the evening.
Yes, thank you, Steve, and thank you for a wonderful job. And I want to thank those people who tuned in this evening. We're going to make this video available for viewing soon on the same area of our website that you found today's call-in information. So look for the on-demand meetings area at mymanatee.org/townhall. Thank you again.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.